Laura, if you want to just describe Shea Fireworks a little bit.
Okay. All the, all the applications that are on here are the same ones we get every year. Also Shea Fireworks. And this year he put in two applications, but he really only wants one fireworks stand. So the first application is his address that he had last year, which is in that little triangle. And, and so that's the first one. The second one is over at where the tire shop is, that mall area. That's the other application that he put in for. And the reason he put in two is because there is an issue with parking and city, on city property on that first, first one. And so he thought if he couldn't get that, then he would ask to have the second location.
When you say that little triangle, you're talking about, does that, does that work? Eisenhower goes into, yeah.
Fifty-six, nine, five, nine, nine.
So in the past, we, we ran into this problem before last year Glenn and I went and spoke with him. We worked out a, we negotiated out a deal, but he told us that he wasn't having fireworks. I thought last year was his last year.
That's correct. That's right, dude.
If you approve that site, my recommendation would be contingent upon us again coming up with an agreement for parking on that because the roadways aren't wide enough in that area. You've got fifty-six on the south end of it and what is that? Can't think of the road.
The other one behind it.
East of Washington.
Yeah. Oh, that's, that's first or, or I'm sorry, that's, that's Ames.
Is that Ames?
It's Ames. It's Ames.
So Ames Street isn't wide enough there to really have long street parking. So he's been using the city lot, which is butted up to his property on that. Last year, I don't even know what we charged him.
No, no, the problem is we have to fence it off to direct people in there. And then we had some rains last year, so we got river flooding and rutted in there. And that's the real problem. So that's, that's why we didn't like it, but we, we let him do it because he said it was going to be his last year. The grass, I think, has since grown back most of it at least, but at least a lot of ruts when it gets soft in there. That's the only way you can make parking work, because you're right, because on the street, there's not enough parking at all to meet our requirements. So he has to park on our property there. So, so it's, it's not the worst thing, but it's, it's not the best for that, that little piece of property we have either because it does tear it up quite a bit. So the rest of the summer, it sits there with bottom ruts and whatever. We really don't use anything. It has a welcome to volunty sign on that. So anyway, that's, I guess, his first choice from what I understand his application.
It is. And when he spoke to me, he asked me about the parking situation and all that. And I said, that has not changed. And so I said, there's a chance that might not, the first one might not be approved. Would you be okay with that if they approved the second one? And he said, no problem.
I think last year also part of that, because we never got signed, was we were supposed to receive a referral refusal on his properties. So at some point, we could have all that property and make it into parks or some type of park or something. I don't think we ever received that though.
And so the other one, we've done, there's no parking issues with the other property either?
No, because it's in that strip mall.
It is, it's fully, it's on like the side yard or anything like that?
I think, I think.
I believe it is, yeah.
It is.
It'll be completely in that area down there, so we won't have anything to do with that.
And there's a haircut business in there, a tire shop in there? Have they voiced any concerns about that tent being in there?
Well, he's leasing it from the guy that used to run the tire shop.
He does still own it. And that tent will be on the further end towards the, towards the tire shop, according to this map. He did turn everything in on those applications.
Does it really have the discretion of the council on which one, on those? These other ones are just standard ones that we've always had, same locations. I'm okay with you. If this references their first location, it's minimal inconvenience?
Well, then we'll just have to, I would still recommend some sort of contingency on insurance or fixing, you know, error in the, anyhow, maybe do any damage look out. Something.
Yeah.
I think that's fine. If you come back up next time, I'm willing to sign with what you've been, I guess, I can resell. Leave it and then if you've got another place you can go.
We'd have to approve both of them then tonight. Because if we approve both applications, he would have a second place. If we don't approve both applications, I don't think that's one.
Might as well just give him two options in case he may, he may want to move, you know, for forecast or rain.
I don't see a problem with it, do you?
I, I, I just dislike paying fireworks here, sir.
Do you see a problem with that?
No, I mean, we lived with that last year. Like, we got a lot of rain last year, you know? So we still, maybe we're, so we got some minor inconvenience for us.
I don't, I might ask Chief Hattler, because I know there was a conversation about that road. That might be worth asking him before you.
Bring him in and ask him. Hi, Mr. Deputy. Any issues with that first location for Shea's fireworks?
Can you, can you, I'm, I'm not even able to listen to what you're talking about.
So Mark Shea put in two applications. His prior reference is next to the city primary lot on Eisenhower, fifty-six highway. Where he's operated, but his parking is on city property because of the streets. Is there any concern from the police department?
Well, yeah, it's, it's tight there. I can tell you getting in and out of that application is going to be difficult. Multiple cars are parked here and there. You can't park on the street in front of there because there's, that street is narrow to begin with. There would be no way to get across that street if you're parking on either side of that road there.
We have, we have no parking on both sides of that road.
I have to have it back, back in check. I, I do know it's on at least one side, but I'm not positive the other.
Because we might have to do a, a review making that no parking on both sides.
And then, then you're done, you had that at your request.
I'm good with that. I definitely think they wouldn't want to make sure our emergency rule is through this.
That would be my biggest concern.
If we want to make that in February, no parking during those times that they set up itself, I think that's reasonable. And they just have to.
Yeah, the triangle would be very tight, getting in and out, one way in, one way out.
I think we did that last year.
I thought that would be.
Do we need a parking on one side?
We did.
Are you going to put it below low?
You what?
Is this a pro or a low low?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Like, that gives them some options. And Glenn and I can have discussion with him again. On that.
So we leave the final discussion, you and I, the center of conversation around, that's option A.
Yeah. We'll give them some options. I think last year we charged him fifty dollars. I mean, it wasn't, I don't know if we did that. I mean, the money wasn't the issue, by any means. It's just a safety to make sure our public safety can get through there. And one, having us listed on the insurance was the big thing, so if somebody got hurt.
Although then we, we agree with the consent in item three for the, for the applications submitted. All, so sit with them?
Second. We'll do second, I'll favor the second. I'll call it in, eh? Next, I'll put down a comment.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm just, I'm also, uh, I'm just, um, the, you see, the email that, uh, you know, like.
Just, just, like, did you say your name?
I live in the two oh seven, so we drive. Being on my, I own more already than one thirty-three cent of our, so. I sent everyone here on the City Council, Mayor, a letter of concerns that Mayor and I had had immediately. Despite the law, proposed, I know that. I came here tonight to talk to you, you know, with a fellow of the property owners, Saturday night. Was never resolved about this, still have a lot of questions. So I'm just going to basically, if I have any questions, if you can answer me. It's, uh, Mayor and I are here tonight with a fellow who was sending a drive-by car on the orders. And they asked City Council, you know, to pause a couple of our projects, send them there. Send them a mail to members of the City Council, Mayor and our concerns. Their addition after parking now is fifty years old plus. It was designed to drive straight, hard, hard, on both sides. Traffic, merchants, the areas, getting through areas. That was designed, originally I don't know any of the members, it's designed. It did have a gas light or a street, uh, gas lights, they were on a show. There was no significant, you know, it was gated and probably set that water hole like Chris came in and, uh, so there was no street lights. So there's, so, uh, the lights put in there. So anyway, uh, I didn't get any, I just got some safety questions. I know, uh, we had probably for thirty-five, forty years, and there was somewhere near, down the street, there had probably been forty years. New York, you know, here next to me. And we, uh, we don't know that any of the property owners was asked for the one sidewalk along that street. Did members of the sidewalk, maybe everybody, probably did not have a sidewalk across along that street, any of the property owners? Uh, you know, also there was, uh, sent to the City Council, Mayor, of concern, uh, or to the side of the property owners. And the responsibility is, uh, Mayor's toll, who's asked, or who's, who's responsibility is that? That if they have to repair, and the company, there was such a crack, uh, who does this? I asked City Mayor, which he responded to these questions regarding this. The thing is, it probably was locked down, there, there are several years, a lot of them. And this, they have to go back to sidewalk. And this, it, it created a minor torn, uh, somebody in the new subdivision, we know that that's required. We never, uh, when I was on City Council, that's not required. Because it came about, all the streets were out there earlier, too. So many, in fact, that were all suspected, and it was a lot. So I guess, uh, I know some of the property owners, they decided, well, they're just like, well, that was, maybe all come down the side of the street, so they had issues. So I asked him, and I, I realized some of the councils, I was sure that they were on there with the issues aside. And, uh, I know that you're trying to interrupt it, fire on something that you had, you may make decisions on. So, uh, I would hope that the council someone responds to all the concerns that the email. And I would like to ask that the City Council could take action on this slide. To divert this project, women, ladies, and gentlemen, and tell us some questions specifically. I know that a lot of people have not got any information on it. We had to, uh, really, uh, they were horrible, they made an information on it from the community development director. It just kind of was, we were all, uh, I don't appreciate that. So he finally did this, and they all stood up to us. Of course, it had a sister interest in somebody, attention to somebody else that, uh, that not part of our profession. And I, I don't think that it makes a progress, some are not in our profession, the property owners, owners are not kind of type. And, and, and your courses and your issue, I, I, I just, I just like to ask you a question. City trail that goes along six feet, the big cracks, you just put on that. Your own courses, all property owners, they didn't ask for it to be completed. I, I don't know what the citizens tend to are now, but in the future, things like that, when that's enforced on you. And if something like this is being enforced on property owners. And, uh, so that's really, uh, all I have to say. I know you probably all have the email, the concerns of the Senate. And, uh, I guess now if you'd like to ask any questions, or like to ask any of the other property owners any questions, they would be glad to answer them. And, uh, I, I would hope that you can intervene on this contact and put a halt to it, just some questions to answer. For the, it, it's just like, I, I, I just hate to see things harsh on people. They, they have no decision, they can really have the financial, uh, on the future. And, uh, you know, questions that they're asking, people really want the sidewalk. Another question, I guess, it ends up at fifty-six highway. So, so what happens there? You put it on the crossing, fifty-six highway, you could talk to the state about that. There are several questions, and, uh, I would hope I can get some answers sometime. And like I say, I, I vote that the council will see that, even though it's not on the agenda, intervening with this project, and partially some of the land they started in some places, I don't know to set up a drive, until we really find out what's going on, if people really want stuff like this. And what is the property owner's consequences, taking care of the property or saving for something like this. I know Ryan here asked some questions, the designer showed some driveways are, they showed, see that, some driveways fell. They showed driveways, some on sixty. Some on the, uh, list, design driveways weren't part of the cement, well, way to curb and go. So there's a few places that have places around in between cement pass to the garage and the street. And some of those places, I know Ryan's concern is showing me that, that they're not even going to extend it in twelve feet. So he's going to have a sidewalk to sixty or four feet, whatever with that. There's going to be a patch about ten foot around, and then it goes to there this. And so the design here, the design that they're applying this, did a real poor job, getting the contact, finding the property owners. And, uh, so there again, I ask for intervening with this. And if you have any questions, you can ask me, or I'm sure Ryan, the last time, you know, Danny Scobie, Scobie, they went over there for like forty years. Forty-five, forty-five, forty-five. So they're the old timers. So, uh, I hope you're my concerns. And, uh, I hope that the council asks you to answer for me for some of those. And I want to thank you for your time. So if you have any, any questions you can ask me, if not, I'll let you discuss it. And, uh, I don't know if anybody else is commenting, or not. So, is there any questions, any other you'd like to ask me?
Do you want to have any questions or meetings?
No, I, I do, I, I agree on that. There is discussion about getting safe mounting, we get out the little crossing there. The whole goal is to get that other neighborhood back down. So it gives clarity there on the sidewalk, you can connect across highway, the rear crossing ideally. If it's, if it's smart or something.
I, I, I know for you, it was on this, would decide, uh, you think it's right, wrong, the property owner's contract, before it was just a storm?
I know there was some discussion about it, about, not even for council, it was, it was a topic that was, that was on council. And there was, and you guys, we were here, there.
Um, yeah, I can, I can talk to that. We did have, in fall of twenty eighteen, we did have a community meeting that was put it out to everybody and added in this room. So I, and it took feedback from everybody at that point. After that meeting, uh, was when the Berliner plans were done, and then we've been talking about for about a year and a half till.
Well, we did not become aware, uh, late last fall, that our neighbors had heard of it. And, uh, we just feel like that something that's a financial burden on property owners, like, they, 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 a lot of things discussed about property owners. Whether it is us, or other places, it's just looking to happen. I, I don't know, it's, uh, it's just very, uh, I, I'm sure something that happened, if you're actually like, in the form of, of a law playing well. And, but, uh, easy way of other, uh, communications, very easy, you can email yourself, you can, uh, you can have your address. I don't know, you can do it well. I, I think the lack of communication is, uh, really, if I haven't known about this sooner, I'm not talking to the sooner about it. I mean, this is the first council meeting, and I've been aware of it. And, uh, we may try to get more information, we was, so, uh, I don't think that was explained in the, uh, the Senate dispo. Does anybody else have any questions?
I don't like, you know, we're trying to keep these more sort of a discussion, more of a comments, but, but I know I'm accessible. Happy to talk to anybody one-on-one or one-on-many about your concerns. Sounds like you have process issues. Happy to talk about that. He may have an issue with the decision that's been made. Happy to talk to you about that, but, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll, we'll get together, me, I can share my thoughts. I don't want to speak for the rest of the council. That's why I have this discussion between you and I in this forum, it doesn't make sense, so.
Yeah. And I, and I understand that, but I don't think we as people on property owners, etc., given the opportunity to express our, to express our concerns. And I know that it's early, you know, it's early, they buy all that contracts. But, but I just, there's just so many unanswered questions for us, probably owners. And that's the reason, like, if you decide to do it, and have some questions, you can answer those, that's fine. But in the meantime, I'd just like, I'd have members of council, they just said, hey, let's stop this project, it seems like a really, you know? Why, why is this, why is this, why is this building there? There's no explanation. I don't really have any information for those. They, uh, I don't, I don't think, a lot of those things should have been explained, what was going on? That's really the ask, intervention, uh, where this is, so. Ryan, you have any other questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna, I would like to. I would like to. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Do you have my number?
And I, I live outside, they drive to.
I'm sorry.
Millie Scobie.
And you can say your address.
One one five, that I think they drive.
First of all, I'd like to know, hours when this community was talking about the sidewalk, whatever, in twenty eighteen, hours of community, no one drive. Which we never heard anything about until a few days ago. And now you live there for forty-five years, and my biggest question is, why is the sidewalk necessary? In forty-five years, it wasn't necessary, so why is it necessary now?
And I think, just for firm, Scott, I think, again, more than happy to have the discussion. This is the time that council pays all day.
Okay, well, I just asked him.
Yeah.
And if it is necessary that we have sidewalk, this is city going up to the sidewalk in every street that doesn't have one in. So that the people will have a new walk. Very simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
I just want to make a comment. When we did the beautification downtown, all of the property owners were notified, were meeting, and I attended all of them. And there was some discussion about trees, this, that, and the property owners had some input. Because what they wanted, the first diagram, is totally different than what we really thought. Because the people that own property knew what we needed and what we wanted. But also, and they wanted lots of trees and all of this, and they'd go, hey, wait, you can't see the storefronts. I mean, when you're not involved in things, you don't, sometimes don't see some concerns that are there. So I just think from now on, they're gonna have a project, notify the property owners. I mean, there's too much email and letters, if they could get a lot of their rails and send it to them. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Anybody else want to speak?
Hi, hi. My name is Brian Brudt. I'm the manager of property at William's today. One thing I would like to add is, is if it did have the process where we could legally speak and ask questions, we do help here on one of those houses. And, you're going to do a lot of things, from what I've seen. And that is going to make a part of the rescue, the young man, the wheelchair, it's not a house. So I have a bad, I'm not getting a lot of doing to either, you know? On that situation, we're going to be able to create somewhere, where we're working. So this is, you just put on a meeting, not any, right, all the other, it's, it's a hardship on me. So, you know, I think that's a better process.
Again, I'm not really ready to tell what he has. Uh, feel free to speak maybe now, I'd be just, I said a comment personally, it's a unique with my buddy about this, about how side of the council meeting, what happened here. Do you hear me? Yep.
This is, one more question. And some of the, the questions that they're, I spoke to, this is an intro about this on the phone. What, what is the answer on maintenance on sidewalk, that's a whole other problem. What is the story of the, of us? I, I don't remember, like, you know, just that, uh, it's just, it's involved, uh, I, I mean, there's just unanswered questions. But I don't know, they think that there was a lot of elements, the co-host, is that? That's the reason I asked you for, for all of them, right here. Since the question, I mentioned, it sounds like, you go to, one of them, they take the ash going on, I, they, they could take the ash, going on in two weeks. We did, yeah, had, had, there's more facts, we were some, they did yours. But what's going to happen, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to have, and then we're going to be in here, and I don't know that they have. You know? And then, I don't think anyone on the council would like that to happen. I think they would like to, they would like to treat people, they would want to. And then, that's the reason I asked you. Just some interventions, sometimes, like, some things, like, you can answer. And, uh, uh, because I know what's going to happen, it's going to, they all, I don't know, I don't know. Well, you know, I like to sleep here, you know? And, and, and I think, if you guys know about it, if it was going to be something like this, you would like to know what I liked before. I, I had no idea what you had. And, so, I'd like to, like I said, make sure projects, hold it, to get some answers, about other different things. I think they know what we, our, our, and, and, and find out, I don't believe, why, just a sidewalk, one, two, one, one? What was this, uh, we have a, so I had visits across town, there never produces. You know, I, I'm only trying to count out, but, but you gotta count out the people you hurt. And basically, it's a bird, for us, this is what happened. The way the street is, it's a long street, there's a bunch of property in the way. And, uh, this is, this is going to make me put that out, maybe on the sidewalk, it's going to be a lot of same property. But it's just trying to take a lot of green space away from, uh, the question, that we had for a mailbox, and everybody has their mailbox along there. We don't know, well, it's just a sidewalk, right, or really a mailbox, it's very, it's just a sidewalk, it's, it's, it's. Was there any answer in the world? I don't know much. So, uh, that, I understand, so, you may make sure, Bill, you can start, or not even, so, we can have some answers. I'm sure you guys will say that, I know your property. So, so, we think for the time, you know, that's all, all of it.
Thank you, Junior. Any other comments?
All right, um, Lynn, where do we, where do we sit on that? Wait, when are we scheduled across First Street?
Yeah, I don't know. I know they're down by where they're, they're going up the other way, going toward the campus, I don't know when they're crossing. They're finding out what their schedule was.
Check tomorrow.
Yep.
Uh, and then, I guess you know, you spoke to us.
I don't know, I don't know what to say.
I said, um, we're gonna check to see what their, what the project schedule is for the property. Uh, I guess you know, you spoke to us, so I'm gonna reach out to you. After we get that to you, you know, and I'll set a time to, you know, listen to that. That's how it works.
I don't know, I don't know, some towns in the area, I don't know. I don't know how many of these, I don't know. I don't know, Julie is, Sky, I don't know, you know?
Well, I just, I'm just...
I mean, you know, I swear, we went through a lot of these still, and, and it's just kind of with laws and, uh, I don't, I'm just not really sure, any of those questions there, I don't know why it was when it calls us. I mean, why not? I mean, people want to have a walk out of the house, and they want to walk around the street against the sidewalk, and there's just a lot of things that don't make sense.
Let me get a, um, let, let, let me get that answer from Lynn tomorrow.
Okay.
And then I will, uh, I'll reach out to you. We'll probably have to put something on the, on the city's schedule because it could turn that to a form if we have, we'll get council members. So I'd love to do that, hopefully by next week we can have some of that.
All, all my students, I don't know people coming to stay on. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good job when I talk on one-on-one to the campus.
Yep, yep, thank you.
All right. Next up. Those are the reports for presentations.
Because grandstanding is very rare.
Can we amend the agenda then if we go back? Let's amend the agenda and use special report of presentation from our new business. I know we're, uh, that's...
One second, please.
Oh.
Oh.
I just said that motion.
I'm so busy.
I didn't even hear that one.
All right. Matt, for your...
All right, good evening, Council. Um, you know, it's supposed to go over really the, uh, part of the plan there. I like it, uh, first to say, um, I like Casey Lynn and the director of construction work for, um, discussion about having a rule. And, uh, I feel like it may be a good progress, you know, good options. Uh, you know, we did feel like we wanted to, no one had, we're excited to be able to offer some sort of cooperating, you know, by getting staff to do it safely. Last one, and so lessons are kind of right now. And so that's what we're looking to do. And if we can find a way to fully staff, we will, uh, look to provide some options too. So if you had any questions, more than happy to answer.
So, um, Matt came and had the request of the regulation dimension they wanted to present into the council and kind of consensus on, that doesn't work, but just kind of a consensus that, you know, we're staying, not having to do the regulation dimension, that, um, that, you know, everybody thinks it's a good plan type of thing, uh, so there's that unity there, I guess. Matt, correct me if I'm wrong.
How many staff do you have right now? How many more do you need?
Well, starting with, we were down to about three. Uh, longer we went, um, the more we dropped. So we didn't have, you know, no landing in place yet, just kind of playing that waiting game, a little dropped and, and, but now that we've got a plan in place, uh, we are up to about fourteen yards right now with, um, I believe six or eight of those big water safety structures. So we've got another, another week, well, week and a half to do some repairing, so optimistic that we'll get there. Uh, so looking good so far, but that's kind of where we're at right now. Fully open though, we would be close to thirty, if we were to do some sort of open one, right around there, twenty-five to thirty. Um, we need to get the last ones, some lessons underway. We really need, uh, about fifteen, sixteen yards, both of those being water safety structures.
So if any, man, there any, um, so I know...
Yeah, more than I thought you had, so we could, could get you out and happen certain... Longevity clause, I mean, they could, you could be back to three, a week after the open. Is there any way that we can send them by saying that they've signed up for the entire swim lesson and last one?
Sure, sure. We have kind of gone a little beyond in terms of paying for our structures. Typically, um, you can find a ladder return at nine to ten dollars a year. Knowing things, the situation we're going to be in and, and trying to recruit best as we can. In addition to Ottawa closing, with Gardner closing, with Lawrence closing, we thought we might be able to hold some of our, we've got our pace scale limit for my parts for this summer only. Um, we're in that well, well, fifteen range depending on your qualifications. So well, well, now ours is not shabby. Um, water safety structures will be in that thirteen to sixteen dollar range. Um, so I think that's helped, um, we lose some of our resources in the last case. So, you know, we're doing, like I said, we're a little more career right now. So I think we did, we did that, we'll have enough, definitely do lots of swim lesson. Um, but I, I really would like to open some, open swim for the community as well.
So are you gonna be doing training now, uh, for people to come in?
Yes, well, well, yeah, we have, we have a software we have at place, it's called Red Desk. We can do some of that where last swim, um, you can register, we'll give you a schedule last swim. So you would sign up for a time, and then we'll go like all that information, and I address the number, and then we'll go know who's there, what, what time slot, at all times. Even if we open swim, we could get that point, we'll do the same thing. So that, that kind of ties in, um, a couple people who want this, started being discussed probably, um, I was concerned about since Ottawa, Gardner, Lawrence were closed, that we would be flooded with potential out-of-towners and nobody in town would get to swim. Is there any, which require a piece of mail or something, or to get in type deal, or? Sure, at this point, we, we don't have any plans to, um, exclude non-hospitals, we leave schools for sure. Um, if we get to the point where we're, we're monitoring ourselves being overrun, and we may look and implement something, because as most of the land is right now, um, they're very fluid. We can put a plan together today, in two days, you know, it could be totally different. You have to grab something, start over. So, so this plan that you've got is very fluid. It may change when we open, uh, it may change while we're open. You've got, got that flexibility. Um, for last swim and open swim, those would be hatched, uh, type situations. For instance, open swim, we would live it for first one, one, twenty-five people to sign up for a time slot. We do have a little bit of flexibility in there to increase if things are going well and, uh, we can manage it safely. So typically in the summertime, you know, during the week, it's not too busy, uh, we can come and go. But if a plane had in front of you, we, we walk up ninety-minute timeframe to come in. It's not a ton of time, but it's a fair amount of time, ninety minutes. If we find that, uh, we've got waiting lists for most of our people coming in or out of town, we may look at trying to do something where benefits give me a little better. But we'll, we'll have to play that by ear and see how, yeah.
Makes sense, it's not, don't fix it yet.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions for that? Does everybody, uh, dealing with this plan?
So, appreciate the thought. It will change, things may relax, maybe go the other way. You know, you'll be, you'll have to change with it. So I know you have to get ahead of this, have a plan, so if you're where you are, I appreciate the done, that's important.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
All right, thanks, guys. Good evening.
All right, next, is new business? Kansas County Department of Work, what went in? Lynn, you want to address that?
Pardon me?
Yeah.
If you'd ask me a question.
I know.
We have a, for the, for the city.
Rob.
Oh, wow.
It's an annual appointment.
Yeah, right.
All right. Any questions on that? Uh, we're entering motion.
I know, I took a stand there, there's someone on the way to, to go to county where it's in San Antonio.
Second.
You can move to second, I'll favor second.
Aye.
All those in, motion passes. Our item is if the city white maintenance, probably wanna explain this over to the council?
So, um, I've been thinking about this, looks like I can add to the public works part of about eighteen months, you know? Um, I never really understood why we never see our asphalt streets. Um, I agree too, it was always, uh, patchy, well, like, patchy, well, like, which, which street, incredibly expensive, as you all know. Um, we did almost a hundred million dollars worth of opening last year. It gets, it gets expensive real quick. Um, and I'm thinking, why aren't we doing our best to protect these streets? And, uh, a little more checking, and, um, chip and seal streets is, in my opinion, the best way to do that from all my, my favorite streets. Which I'm coming up with indicates that chip and seal street lasts about seven years. This, this particular, this particular road that I had for me is, I guess we'll just call it phase one, um, because it hasn't been any chip and seal done and going on this. It was first, first two years I worked here, um, eighty-eighty, eighty-nine, it was last time also said chip and seal many streets. So this one, which we're calling phase one, we do about eighty-nine, this is a chat, which is a little less dusty, um, and, and we, we selected, I mean, these areas, I don't think I put in the hand, you're, you're showing the streets that we selected for four phase one, and we, we, we looked at all the streets, you know, and such which ones are, are in the very best condition that we really need to get on right now, have, have the chance of saving. And so, um, this is, this is important, actually. Basically, what this is encompassing is all fire tree, um, silver leaf, all of the ridge and part of similar looks. And, you know, this is, I guess we're gonna have to see what kind of response we get on this. The downside that you can see, the only downside that I know of is it's, it's a little bit dusty till the aggregate sets. We probably have to go back and do some sweeping or something, uh, once the aggregate sets. But I'm in hopes that the handout, which was significantly higher, we'll do a better job in these residential history, so twenty, twenty-five miles there is being done. Hopefully that test isn't a problem. If this works out well, whereas, which I hope it does, I'd want to develop phase two and phase three for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two that I'd have to share with you guys. Um, just, just kind of depend on, you know, how much money we need, how much we're gonna be able to do. That's over here. Best research I can find indicates that the chip and seal street lasts about seven years. I think it's gonna take about seven years to get completely ground down, one section at a time. We're asking council tonight to consider bringing in twenty-twenty citywide, we made late maintenance, we're working with construction contract, we had to render, we're now at a hundred and ten thousand, hundred and twenty-five dollars. Basically, it's fourteen thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents for add all their number of DW for a rental of a hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents.
And Rob, um, what was the budget and pound out for this project?
This, this all comes out of the, uh, twenty-eighty, uh, which is the, uh, especially, there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted, that matter none this year. So, so we still be doing some, uh, the normal, uh, taking out patch and hot mix. Um, we'll still be doing some of that, um, and then we'll, we'll continue to do so. This is something I really, I really think we need to do as a city, to kind of get off our streets and try and take them, and, and as much as we can. Very, very expensive to, to overlie. We have some areas still, and, and we're really appreciate that, that was time to get on.
As rudimentary, kind of one-on-one, so... So the asphalt is, i- 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 is a difficult street, like for example, on that street, that's just asphalt, we bring in the crabs, and then, it's, it's, you, you lay asphalt. Right. Okay, so chip and seal is sort of like a puff-up layer, you say we're in the last month, seven years, so it's not about seven years, your asphalt's not good, and you just reach it, the seal, which is, you know. Okay.
What we're trying to do is stay off, and what, you start seeing cracks, minor cracks, and then you start seeing the big, tighter cracks. What we're trying to stay off, if you get in before they start seeing the cracks in the road, we're going online, it's three, because it needs a lot of, you know, re reason off, that's what we need to solve. So this is, I, this is, this is an experiment, I really, I mean, it's, 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 it's all the years, and I really, we're raising the plan, the reception we're gonna get, because I think we don't have the right reasons.
So, so track that in, you know, we got a street budget anyway, you know, so this, um, it sounds like you're looking for a return on this being a better investment of how we maintain our streets.
Sure, so.
The idea of, of what's the positive differential to do with chip and seal versus just an asphalt look? You know, so, so it's more expensive, so what percentage, and then to expect it'll last long enough, that's actually a better investment.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna definitely eventually anyway, probably, some of the old streets, and I hope that doesn't just won't get to a pass up. And that's why we started with the island area, is never, and also the addition, streets are in better condition. Uh, but let me extract what you think. Um, the ninety, ninety-second street, the schools, they take later last year, which was the majority of that, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to be spent last year, or like, that, that really needed a lot of work. And, uh, we did the Javelin Street, um, Fifth Street, and we did a little spot on Eleventh Street at Ames, and that was the, was the, the, uh, Javelin Street, where that was twenty-seven thousand, and, and that was strip out by Eleventh and Ames, was, was only had that, about ten, so, so it is quite expensive to, to overlie. And that's, I, 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 I don't know, it's, I mean, it works, it works well, but it is, it is terribly expensive. If we can, if we can get an extra seven years for fourteen, I mean, it would be too much money lost now.
From your perspective, Rob, would you, would it be accurate to say that to do this on the road, it would be more than the cost of the asphalt?
Probably, yeah, absolutely. There is, I don't have the numbers in front of me, easy, but I think that it's at least that, I mean, down the streets, we're gonna, I mean, we're covering a lot of territory for a hundred and sixty thousand. The, 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 that's, 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 we're running around the public works and around our land, it's, it's, we need to get some, we're gonna start establishing that on there, so.
Since the period of previous public comment, is there any, really, you know, some potential downside to this relative to what's currently there? Is it any aesthetics, any other, you know, issues that we really should notify, you know, property owners that we're gonna do this? Um, what's, what's thought on there?
I think, uh, typically we don't put it at least on social media, this project's coming up, we already have more street maintenance in this area, it'll probably last this long, and we try to get all that information out as much as possible.
I'm gonna try to take care of most of that.
Yeah, it's, it's, so what chip and seal means, and they may think you're picking gravel, right? So there's gonna be some concern, I can see, I've got the data, I like it, blah, blah, how's, what are you doing? How different is it gonna be? I think we need to do some education on the final look, or what it'd be, and the benefits of doing it, which is an education, you know?
Right. Probably something on social media.
Aesthetic would look different, I'm gonna bring you an example.
Yeah, you need to, it's gonna have a red tint to it. Chip and seal, that have white, that's just chat, or chat, just, you need, I think that guy's got a red tint. Yeah, you need to have a red tint to it, chip and seal that have white, that's just chat, or chat, just, you need, I think that guy's got a red tint to it, and it really is.
That chip and seal a little more rocky though, versus the more smooth, if that makes sense, but it's sealed down the rock with tar.
Right. If you're driven on a chip and seal road, I just.
Yeah, driving on a fresh chip and seal road is, that's the worst part of it, um, once you're here, then it gets a little better, but, uh, but, yeah.
It's pretty, it may be, maybe.
I think we have to, I think they'll come back and get, get the excess loose stuff, but then probably later on, we'll have to do, have to be real careful, so you're not digging up the gravel, but that may be something we have to run our streets with over clean up, once it has a chance to set.
Any questions, Rob?
This is, this is just an idea, something I'd like to try, and, and, you know, we've taken it to this point, we've taken it to the utility committee, and, uh, you know, if, if we're absolutely opposed to that, we can go right back to the way we've done it the last thirty years.
I mean, I'll, I'll say this, I'm actually a fan of chip and seal, I think it's kind of like having, you know, cement driveway, that you see every couple of years, does the cement last longer? Versus if you dive over, especially in our climate where it freezes thaw, freezes thaw, uh, as you get cracks, that moisture gets down in there, and it freezes, busts with cracks on them, that's why you see, it actually a lot, a lot. So I see chip and seal as kind of like a long-term sealer for our roads, just like you would seal concrete to keep it maintained.
Phase one's was selected based on it being the closest it needed to be redone, so you're, most preserved, so you're preserving more of the base.
Now, Rob, Rob was signal oak, that paved portion?
No, not the new road, just, yeah, that's excluded.
But, but the, the cul-de-sac?
Signal oak will be in that, um.
I was saying, the cul-de-sac that goes off.
No, I didn't, I didn't, because I didn't want them up there on that new road.
No, I agree, I agree, I'm asking, I think that was chip and seal first, before it was asphalt.
Oh, yeah, I believe it was.
Okay.
Recommend, recommend this bid, because, I think you said it already.
Was it the lowest bid?
It was, it was advanced brothers, and they're well, now, now they're doing well, so I think they're working at your turn, you know, possibly, and they kind of highly recommend it.
Well, I know the story, but Rob, you've never considered this wrong, so, um, I, I certainly trust your judgment, and I appreciate you doing all of this research and finding a cheaper alternative.
Right, so like, if, if you're curious, I'm happy to share phase two and phase three, if this goes well, I mean, it's basically working its way around the outside edges. Phase two will take in Eisenhower, all, all the area around the school district, first North Fair Street, Ames, possibly the airborne circle inside, they drive inside, depending on how much money they have to spend. Phase three gives us everything west of Eleventh Street, all the west of one, all the dead end streets, all the eleventh street, all the west of one, again. Then there on, we'll start working on the core streets, they take a section into east-west, and we'll take a section into north-south, um, eventually, we can get around all eleven, and we're gonna repair them, and get them in, uh, seable condition before we do chip and seal, I, I think it'll take seven years to do it, and then we'll be the point where we're starting over again, like phase one. Looks good on paper. That's where you gotta start.
Yeah, assuming you're bringing like phase two and three, you know, as a budget recommendation, try to put in a long-range plan.
Absolutely, if we, uh, if we approve this, I believe that they'll want to be here in that office to do this, so we're gonna have to get on the freeway and have it ready for them.
Any other questions for Rob? Not that one, any more? Anybody?
May I interject, you have any more to add?
It's a long motion.
Yeah, it's all that. I'm gonna use my mic for the night.
So, so, just to make some clarification first, so, so, in, in this motion, we're pushing to approve that bid? Do you want, wanna, do some, do some education first, since, here's what Scott said.
Well, I think, I mean, if you don't approve the bid, it's gonna push back the project, which, um, is a concern with the weather.
Right.
Um, I don't think that if the council's wishes is to put out communication on education, um, chip and seal, um, you know, June and July, because that's, you know, we got two and a half months, we're gonna show up, we got, and obviously our communication, or to start working on that with Rob, and get that communication out there on our social media platforms.
More of an education, or are we supposed to be back and make a decision?
Right. Yeah, so the one, who approved it?
Well, I can't admit to it.
Are you?
I think we are.
Yeah, you're approving the bid, I mean, you're approving the project, which is, which is a project, I mean, we always do street maintenance during this time of year, because if you don't continually maintain them, obviously it's gonna turn out to be a much lower cost in the future for us.
Just like I think. This is wrestle with the, uh, education process versus giving feedback and listen to it and maybe making a decision based on it, but I just think we won't get it, but the regional asked for it, you know, so. That's what I'm wrestling with. Give us two weeks, just two weeks, put it in your mind, at least give us two weeks to get some feedback.
A little bit, a little bit behind the curve this year, because I wasn't really up to speed on the process and, and due to contact, as far as different bids in the right hands, um, probably not, I mean, I, I don't want to over dramatize it, but in two weeks, they, they, usually mid-September is about the cutoff point for them, they want to do it once.
Right, ideally.
I mean, it's, it's, um, it's, it's, it's like I said, you do a project, I think I have to go in and say, we're doing it for the right reasons, and we understand some people aren't gonna like it, but it's just for greater benefit of the right reasons. They're trying to, they're trying to stay off our larger cost than our own, the tactic we have.
How long was everyone working place above that? I'd like to at least have an opportunity for people to ask questions, avoid, as much as possible, surprising somebody that have a valid point. I don't know, they will, but, this is, that's where I'm at. It doesn't sound like the project is derailed if we approve it in two weeks. If you told me it was, it'd be much harder.
Yeah.
Discussion. I would like to see us get to the doubt, to phase one, you know, phase one, our, 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 just as a simple plan, and we can come through feedback, you know, if we present the, you know, the differences, and just get an opportunity. And people are not gonna be happy, I'm not looking for consensus, I'm looking for maybe some root reasons that we have a lot of, that we might want to change it.
So, what are you propose on communication, social media, cause?
Well, what's our normal process, exactly, we, we make sure, you know, we have a process for things like this, um, that do impact property owners potentially indirectly?
Well, and, and I guess I can come out, um, when we notified on the sidewalk, for example, we put that, I believe, in the newspaper, on social media, and then have a community meeting, correct?
Uh, on the sidewalk, we're talking about the side sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that project goes all the way back to, just a little bit after you came here, and that was one of the first resolutions we had, uh, from the, from the council at the time, was resolution for sidewalks and trails, subsequently that, in May, June, I replied, when I had the first, uh, trails, and sidewalk and trails committee, and then later that summer is when we had at least one meeting here, and then had two, my recollection, I have, I have three sidewalk projects, four of them was going on at the same time, and a lot of it is cumulative, there's so much going on, uh, but at least we had one, and, and part of the biggest discussion from that, I know, I know you were there, uh, mayor, and Glenn was there, uh, were the heritage folks, uh, the people from the subdivision, uh, I think it was six, eight people, and they all wanted, and they were concerned, because they had just heard there was not gonna be a busing, and they were like, how do our kids get to school? And if I recall right, that was pretty much the whole dominant point of the meeting, was how do we do that? And that facilitated further discussions on looking at, where does that east side connect to bring that, and that was the big issue, and obviously Fremont was the obvious one. Fremont leads to the stadium, leads to the city park, leads to the pole, leads back to Baker, that was, that was easy. Then the question, Rob, was should it be Santa Fe, which is a lot wider, or should it be Hillside? When we compared costs, and we looked at it and said, well, you know, Hillside could work, it'd be cheaper, however, trying to work with God and getting a crossing would be difficult, because there's not a direct connection, you'd have to go south from that property. Uh, so, we really look seriously at Santa Fe, that's the logical, that's a logical process, and I remember we had a lot of discussion at that meeting, and then from there, uh, if, you know, correct me, Susan, if I'm wrong, we did meet every month, we met once every three months or so? You know, and it's kind of like, okay, we're work we be gee, and get together some did, and we brought it back, and I can't recall exactly which council meetings we had, I know it was two thousand and nineteen, this spring and summer. We brought back those five, and I said, okay, you have these two, you're looking at the sidewalk, and if I'm not in the nauseam, you, correct, or where do you, you want me to keep going?
Um, well, I.
It's in on my mind.
I know, I have, I have. Let's, uh, allow my ask me during, uh, staff comments, to come back up, but, so, on, um, get public input, for this, do we? On, I was asking about that specific project, because I know we did do a campaign to get the information out to the public, because that's how we had people come to a public meeting.
Yes.
Was, do you, now, obviously, we have the hindrance, um, I have, newspaper, uh, again, so back then, we used to do, um, a community newsletter, uh, where I'd write an article, and we'd talk about certain things, um, and as well as social media, we were, we're not as prevalent on social media back then as we are now, um, if I were to write this on something like this, to where it is literally a maintenance project, that we have to do something, would be social media based, because otherwise, we're gonna incur more costs on mailing out specific letters to try to get people's input within the next two weeks, and I think that'd be very difficult, uh, because we typically mail out letters for, with the jolly billy, um, which isn't too terrible, because we're already mailing or something, but to try to mail a specific letter to every citizen, I, I think the social media would be our best bet, and again, we're doing much better on our social media platforms than what we ever have.
I'm comfortable with that, I mean, it's really a decision, it's a maintenance decision, your point, and probably not gonna be any, you know, impact on our property, so, so should we do everything we can, sort of mailing, um, to get, make people aware, and ask for their feedback, put it on the agenda for next council meeting, impact on it, they can show up there, they can contact before that, so, they're good.
Do, uh, fire tree event is a signal, which have, um, homeowners?
Not, not active, no, not active. That's a real question, because usually homeowners associations, they send everybody's email, they can, yeah, to everybody, but, uh, they're not active.
We're just making the best attempt we can with the, what we have, and, and that's all we can do.
Ultimately, we're trying to save people money, you know, and that's, you know, so, but at the same time, we, we are changing it anyway, if there's any, anybody will see feedback, if they'd like to have a nice window to, to provide it, we should, we should do it if we can afford the time.
So let's do this, Rob, and, um, can you guys put together, uh, an information packet, I guess, on what chip and seal is, and let's put that out there, along with the diagram of what we're doing, um, and then go ahead and put my contact, I'm sure the council doesn't mind putting their email addresses on there, um, on Facebook, and I don't know how Tweeting works, but I'm guessing there's certain letters, or, I know there's a certain number of characters you can add, but, um, but put them on whatever platform we can, and get that information out this week, and that week, because with two weeks, that doesn't leave us a lot of time, I want to give them as much time as we can. Just make a short little one, one pager of what it means, or what it will imply.
I think it'll do it, because I think this, this is alone, I think we're gonna get some feedback on it, so, but I mean, these speakers probably don't have a lot of to be good.
Well, I mean, really, our alternative to get it through again is probably a fourteen-year program, but again, four times the cost, so, uh.
Really appreciate it.
All right, everyone, good. All right, next item on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, under our council waiver, this is the waiver for, um, for the, uh, the Lurgas R B. Hopefully to be held August twenty-fourth, sixth.
While it's.
Any questions or concerns on that? All right, I don't want to entertain a motion.
I have a question, uh, are they going to, like last year's, um, have the downtown lot, uh, and everybody can come?
Yes, that was.
Is that going to coincide?
Use your barbecue watch, sure.
Okay, well, I was, I was saying, does that coincide with our phase that we're gonna be in?
Um, technically, the current governor's phases file for phase out, uh, thing is small, so. Uh, I think this, and I talked to Matt about the barbecue event, and I think again, they're trying to get it in, they're trying to do, but they're also gonna follow the, the C D C guidelines, if, if anything spikes or anything like that, I'm sure they'll pull off. Because this was approved already once in May, it was supposed to happen, I think, last weekend, and then they, they pushed it back because of the pandemic.
All the special events that you approved are tentative, based on COVID.
All right, any more?
That's in the verbiage, can I wing it?
Yeah.
Okay, I motion, we approve resolution number twenty twenty dash one-three.
Is there a second? You're moving to second, all favor said.
Aye.
All those name, motion passes. Next is some street lift station, Rob, this is, you're all in.
So the, uh, some street lift station, um, was installed in the neighborhood in the nineties, and is married a thirty-year-old. Of all five lift stations that we manage and maintain, some street lift station is the most difficult access. It sits in a tree line, behind the house, Mustang, and some of the streets in West Hallmark. Um, in order, uh, three weeks ago, preface, three weeks ago, one of the two pumps in the list, lift station failed, um, and so we actually, um, we got that back in there, we got, we have to pull that out, and, uh, so, uh, in order to get back to this particular lift station, what we're gonna have to do is build a road back to install it, um, when we work out the, uh, the deal, I believe, the property owner, so I was to do this, uh, this, we have, it's three months, of, of, of. We have, it's three months of Mustang. And problem is, is the people have built fences and they put up sheds and planted trees since that lip station was installed. And it's almost impossible to access from the front. As I said, there's two, two three A's pumps. Motor tools, slide rails, which allow the pumps to be fed out, service components and just associated hardware. I believe one of these two pumps, probably the one that's still running right now, was pulled out and rebuilt about 10 years ago. So we, yeah, now there's on replacing these pumps. And I believe they're in your package tonight. As you recall, we had the same thing happen to the Forest Street Lip Station last year. It was one of those things where they had a failure and we got to replace it right now. Unfortunately, something like this, we don't have a choice. We could just replace the one pump and continue what it is, but given the remote location, we would really like to go in there and completely rehave this lip station like we did Forest Street last year. And get it out one time and get out. And as I says, this thing has been online for almost 30 years. Lead time to the equipment is four weeks for both vendors. And it's been three weeks already, so we're looking at a total of seven weeks. I'll tell you what's going to happen if that second pump fails is we're going to be building that route in there really quick. And probably using our back trailer and just run that back and forth to waste water treatment plant until we get that pump and get at least one of them back in there and working. So we went out to 10 vendors that sell these pumps. And I talked to Steve Gordon about this and the level is slightly higher. We're recommending that the council prove the bid for Douglas Pump in the amount of 24,379.75. The reason this bid is slightly higher is because Douglas Pump bid provides stainless steel mounted hardware, rails, chains, acre bolts, associated hardware, which lasts much longer in these types of positions. That was, that was, I'll answer any questions. I've got pictures, if you want to see them, what they look like.
So unplanned, I was unscheduled. I know you brought, you brought the budget finance committee, so normally this would have been funded out of the wastewater reserve.
Typically, yes, I believe that's where we were taking that down. Actually, 2019, when we're talking about C I P planning, I asked for a hundred thousand a year for the following five years. Because it just hasn't been a lot of maintenance done at the wastewater treatment plants. It's in, it's in really bad shape. There's no spares at all. The other thing I'd like to do is, once we get the pump out, it's running, I'd like to take it up and see if it's rebuildable, which usually is 45,000. But we used to have one on the shelf. We had the same thing happen at the end of the pump, for one month ago, that plant itself, and there's no spares. So it's being rebuilt now, so without a spare, and that's, that pump can fit in one of five locations.
Council, just for a second, just out of abundance caution, I do own that land that they're crossing, so I'm going to accuse myself of this discussion. So if there's no question of.
Can you, can you explain what we're doing? What kind of a plan is to get our house repaired? What's your purpose?
So. 1221 Fremont Street.
Thank you.
I always say nature is that the city needs access to, to cross over to this lip station without hindering any of the citizens that live or the current easel are. So the idea on the south, if you guys drive south on Lawrence Street and have to cross over, try to continue on town on the left hand side, about 7800. The plan, and I still need to have some discussions with these gentlemen just to make sure. They're going to build a road to access the lip station on the very south end of it. I think my intention is just to, we're going to have to have some surveys done and give that, instead of an easement, I'd rather give that property to the city. So there's no concern with a future property owner having any type of issue with an easement coming across their land. And there's no arguments, I guess, if the city just visits. But again, I have to do some talking to these gentlemen because it's going to require me to then accept that man into the county. Because county regulations may become unbuildable if I allow that to happen. That's how something like that, so. That's the intention, but it's on the very south end, you can see the, you don't, my son fishes out there, that's why. You guys are looking for fish out there if you want. Get a bass pond. But it is on the very south end along the, along the ten block. Just look straight to the east.
So I think we can talk about third dollars on the whole road. I mean, is it, they stand up what you think this is going to be? And we talked about, since there, is it enough in the wastewater reserve undercover to pull it out of electric and water reserve?
We can, it sounds like it's not necessary to do that if we need to. I think it definitely needs to be done. That's why I was saying to, wastewater, if it goes, what Rob's talking about, it's a major, major problem. So I mean, this is some, and it's somewhat unforeseen. These maintenance items like that haven't been always done for craft like they should have been. There we are.
We can talk. Half and half water.
Yeah, whatever, whatever.
Recommendation.
Yeah. That's just a source of it. Bring them in the bed.
Yeah, especially like the idea of rebuilding that one for.
We need to work in that way. I mean, we need spares.
Right.
We don't want, we don't want that back now.
I remember what happened with the water line last year. Scary times there.
They think you get a clean back on chipping the ceiling of the roads.
Do you have a motion here right now?
You do. Ned's in her jacket.
So Susan, I think as senior, you made some good remarks, President, you're thinking, what, one, you were called for?
Oh, surprise.
Oh, right, right. That's actually.
All right, do I have a motion?
I motion, we approve this spending of 24,379.75 for the Summit Street Lip Station replacement.
And do you have a second, I?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue, Sue, do you have it?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can't leave, leave, like, leave Susan area, you don't want to.
Do you want to?
These bags in this, all the head, kind of easily. Bags on the rise. Council Committee here for Budget Finance, Scott.
Yeah. Three minutes here, so we've got the full council, first 2021 budget session last Tuesday, 26th. Appreciate everybody attending. And the next budget session, 2021 budget session scheduled for Tuesday, June 30th at 7:00 PM at the American Legion Hall. So we're still doing social distancing, but we can have some people show up to a certain degree, there will be a public. And that's that. So no date on the depot, a negotiation. The committee has responded through the city attorney. I think the mail went out to Midland's attorney on the 25th with our best and final offer on the major, major terms, just to let them know where we're at. Asked for meeting cover, so that only meeting's been currently scheduled. So the polls in their part right now respond to our last offer. And the next budget in finance, committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, June 5th at 7:45 AM.
You need a balance, Sue.
Yesterday, the committee met and we discussed the Baldwin City flag design contest. And he listed all of the legwork on it, so thank you, Lynn. So design submissions start today and go until July 3rd. And then CDC will then narrow down to the top five at a July 16th meeting. Then the final five design artists will be featured at Lumberyard Arts Center. And on July 17th, the final two designs are decided by the public and it goes to the city council for approval.
I like saying the court.
We've not met since last council meeting. We are meeting Tuesday, June 9th at 4:00 PM at City Hall.
Public Works, Julie, you're right, two of them.
Yeah. We met, the Public Works Committee met on May 21st. And actually, we covered a lot of stuff. We met with Tom Wilson, Franktown County Royal Water District Number One, regarding the potential for a line extension that would encroach within three miles of the existing city territory. What they want to do is CDC Commission, from the city, to extend the line north along 1900 Road. They talked to people along the property that it would affect and 51% decided they were in favor of that. Franktown County Commission also is reporting to be in favor. The committee expressed interest in securing a secondary emergency water source for the city as part of any agreement. Also discussed ideas of potential franchise agreements or forfeiting territory to the Royal Water District Number One. Discuss the need and cost of improving aging infrastructure that serves a handful of customers. Also discuss rerouting water with the new line that would tie into Royal Water District's extension. Discussions will continue of all parties. We talked about a wastewater lip station, Rob, already covered, and the Chipping Seal Road project. Oakwood Cemetery, they had some stolen property, a gator vehicle, and some equipment stolen. So they're having bids come in for replacements of that. The electric department, the tower is coming down at the substation because they're going to put a meter in instead. Also a bucket truck repair. Making bids, progress on the bids with the substation. Also, they were getting some used parts from Odessa, Missouri. They traded obsolete controllers with Holton for more parts. And they're currently rebuilding the unit. Discussed utility reserves slightly down compared to this time last year. Reduced consumption drop from major entities such as Baker and the School District. But citizens staying at home helped to balance it out. The next meeting is Thursday, June 18th at 9:00, City Hall.
Report, thank you, Dylan. Legislative Committee, Julie.
Okay, here we go.
Need a bottle of water?
No, that's. The Legislative Committee met on May 21st. And we discussed the city classification, changing it. Baldwin's population at the last census was around 4,500 people. And you can change the city of a third class to the city of the second class at 5,000 population. I think that we've decided that since there is a current census going on and that's going to be available for probably a couple of years. We need to have a current census that's 5,000 or over to verify or certify that with the governor. So the city attorney and this committee will continue gathering information and reviewing city ordinance until the change can be made. We also talked about the city code concerning solicitors, cancerists, and peddlers. And I think the committee recommended keeping the city code as it is presently. And the legislative committee will meet Thursday, June 18th at 8:00 AM at City Hall.
If I may, I'm just going to expand on the city of the second class because it's been talked about for quite a while. Obviously, everybody anticipated, everybody didn't anticipate the pandemic. So part of the discussion was, you know, in a normal year, Baker students would have been counted in that census. Now, with Baker not in session, that may affect our census numbers relative to that 5,000 mark. So that was kind of part of the discussion that really we didn't have to think about prior. And now you're going to have to take that into account, so. So anyways. Next, city administrator comments, anything?
You know, just a couple of things, we'll go over real quick. Our law enforcement center, if you go by there, 156, are making great progress on that. The weather's been fairly just an ever stop brand. They've got most of the roof on there, so they're making really good progress. They're still on, on schedule to get done here this summer and will be moving in. And we abandoned the old L E C here by the fall. And then we'll have to make a decision on what to do with that building there. I would have to go there. The city owns and can do whatever they want with it. So we need to have that discussion going forward. If you've been by the Sullivan Square lately, you'll notice that it looks great. We have not had a grand opening or anything like that, but people have noticed that the flash bat is operational. We tested it out and whatever, it's been hot. So if you go out there on any night, probably tonight if you go out, you'll like, you'll see tons of people out there actually using this flash bat of all ages and whatever. So have a good time with that. Our fountain is on, although it is leaking a little bit, you may have noticed that, so we got to deal with that. So all those things are going, they're all good and whatever. At the end of the day, we did get notification, it's almost 5:00 o'clock this afternoon, that you may remember, we did apply for the latest round of COVID relief funding under the block grant program. We applied for $300,000. The bad news is we didn't get $300,000. The good news is we did get $132,000. So, which I think is what they're doing now is just giving out as much as they can. They had $9 million across the state and I think they just broke it up and gave us as many as they could. So we have $132,000 and that should go to small businesses as a grant. It will be a loan like some of the SBA program and some of that. So that'd be a direct loan through us to, to those businesses. So we'll have to set up a criteria, probably fall to our finance committee. They need probably some more to do, so you guys have really been doing a whole lot.
I was going to add to that. Our, our plan on that for the finance committee was our Thursday morning meeting, come up with criteria for a recommendation to the finance committee, so you guys didn't have to start from.
Let's start somewhere, yeah.
Right, yeah, we'll, we'll provide that sort of information for you.
So you might just, Scott, figure your agenda on Friday morning.
I'll put that on there.
Put that on there.
And yeah, so we'll go forward with that. So the good news is on that, we got a little over $100,000 and that's federal money coming through us and then that'll help our small business. So, so we're going to recap, you know, we've, we've had the ability for utilities for really anybody in town, whether it's a resident or, or a business. And then of course, a number of people have gotten SBA loans and different things like that. And this will be kind of the, the next step along with that. So I, I think Baldwin City, to its credit, is doing whatever it can to keep business owners in business as long as they can. And a lot of our businesses have really stepped up during the pandemic and done a great job themselves doing, doing business by readjusting their business some way where it's takeout or doing whatever. So I have to give them a lot of credit, because people got very creative during this time. So, and as we noted, actually, our utilities were down a little bit during the first couple of months of the pandemic. Mainly, it's, I think it grew by the schools. But our sales tax has been up a little bit. And if you read the Lawrence Your Own World, you saw that Udora and Baldwin City experienced a little bit. And that's probably because people are shopping at home, they're shopping at our grocery store and our hardware stores, which are really our. They're shopping at our grocery store and our hardware stores, which are really our big drivers for tax anyway. They've just seen a slight increase of about five percent or more on that and sometimes a little bit more. Don't know if that'll carry going forward, it's hard to say. I'm not going to make any predictions. We're now into our budget session. And we're going to be meeting with our department heads next week and have a couple of days with Ben Harton and Jack to go over our budgets or whatever. And then present back to the finance committee for where we're going with our budget. So anyway, so I think I thought that kind of the whole thing, we get a little bit of good news here. With the, you know, we've had a lot of bad news here recently. So might as well finish it off, you know, without something good happening that we can help our businesses out and go on with the next phase of whatever it's going to be in this, whatever I've lost track of all the phases at this point. So let's get the cool, but I want to get back to normal.
I don't know if anybody noticed it, the flashbang, but Glenn got a new pair of swimming trunks that change colors when it gets wet.
I read through it on Thursday.
So I'm sure this is covered, but does it have a motion sensor on it? I mean, does the water come on and off?
There's a timer.
You have to press something.
Yeah, so I saw the kids tonight just run and leave it and it went off like, yeah.
Yeah, it shuts off after.
Was it, ask you on the deferment program, have you had any, but he take advantage of that?
Ah, yeah, almost forty, almost forty homeowners have done, yeah. From what I've heard on that.
Good.
Yeah, so people got, yeah, jumped on that pretty quick. And so we had a good response to that too. So I think that helps people out a lot. So we're no longer under the no shut-off that the governor had done and we had done also. We had gotten ahead of that. So we'll decide here sometime this summer when to go back to doing penalty shut-offs and that. But not right now. The best advice that everybody's given us, although we're not under the governor's orders, the KCC is, don't just jump back right in and start shut people up right up there. That's a little bit cruel right now. People are still, some people are out of work, some people are, you know, having troubles right now. Don't just jump back right in there. But we'll get back to that probably by the end of the summer. We'll get back to sort of normal scheduling. And hopefully, we'll get, we'll get through all this. It hasn't been easy, but again, you know, Baldwin City, I think, pulled together as well any city in the state has. Really done a great job. And our count still in Douglas County for COVID-nineteen cases is still in the mid-sixties. And we've done very well on, obviously, in the social distancing and all the things we've done. So, you know, again, either we're very lucky or doing something right here in Douglas County. We really are probably going.
All right, Ed. Want to get back on your soapbox?
He's calling up, he's got a deal.
Okay, I think the question you were asking me there was, you know, our outreach to the, to the property owners on Santa Fe. Correct. The way that I recall is that back in, back last year, if you, council members, if you remember when these two projects were coming forward and we're discussing it, I think it was approved either August or September. We moved forward with, we had two up. We had the Eastside project and we also had the High Street project. Both of those projects, the key components was that we wanted to hire local contractor because that was city fund. Contractors had to be within the city, within the U.S. three forty-eight counties. So we looked at both projects. We're concerned about money. You're at the end of a construction year, which was pushed and condensed because of the rain that we had last summer. So we decided to push that project until the winter to get that, to get fair bids, which we did get. We went ahead and bid High Street and we were very happy that that actually came under budget from what the engineer had. So we had them start, I think, in October, first of November, did a couple of air, did a little bit around where City Hall was at and then one block over. And then we waited until January. I had the announcement letter part of January. We advertised it, went through the regular bidding process. We had two bids for it. And it ultimately came to the council, I think it was February twenty-eighth. The council approved the bid for BTSK to start going on the project. Two weeks later, I sent out letters, the first round of letters to the property owners. Prior to the bid, we got to remember one thing. We had the, we had the one million dollars for sidewalks and trails. So we had High Street, we had the Eastside, and then we had Elm Street TA grants. And I still haven't applied by the time we originally approved it for the second round, which we ended up getting, phases two and three. So we had to be cautious to go over that million dollar. So my impression from staffs was that, yes, we needed to wait, bid it out, make sure that we came and bid. Otherwise, I'd have to come back to the council and go, you know, we're over, over what all four of these projects could be. And what do you want to do? So once it was bid, I sent letters out to the property owners. COVID hit, we canceled. And then we had that rolling cancelization as well. So that's kind of where we're at, at least on the notification. I have, you know, I sent out letters, I think, May eighth, to all the property owners on Santa Fe because the project had already started. Maybe you've already seen Fremont and they've already, already started on that project. Talked to two, three property owners by phone, met with two on the far west end, the Mullins and the Johnsons, with Rob and the engineer. We showed him it, we walked him through the site. Also contacted the property owner that's on First Street. Contacted Terry Yedder, let her know for the future property owner that there's going to be a site one for that. So I tried to do that. Could I have done more? Yes. And obviously, we'll be working on trying to notify the people and trying to work through that as best we can. I'm not sure where else we want to go with this. One thing I'll let the council know is that the Elm Street project has been bid. We're very happy with that. That project came well under what we anticipated. So that project's moving forward. I have not been able to have a public meeting for that one because of COVID. I will be sending out a notice the latter part of this week, first and next week, to have it the latter part of June on that project. That one, we discussed over and over, had social media arrest for it. And I've talked to several of the property owners. We had to try to get temporary easements for the centerpiece of property in Baker University Sorority. But so we'll move forward with that one as well.
And I guess to add on to, and Susan actually was the chair of that sidewalks committee. We did have a public meeting, just like we did on the laudatorium and all the other projects we've done. And we did have citizens, I think they were mostly Heritage subdivision citizens that came in. But we did have that. Again, that was kind of the, actually, the first area that we looked at because I used to live in Heritage with a small child and I knew how hard it was for my son at that time to, my son, my son, to, to cross over. And again, we just lost our bus service. So the whole premise of all these sidewalks and where they're laid out is, is all for our children to get to and from school safely. We looked at going down Fifty-Six Highway all the way down to First Street. I didn't like that because if you ever have a really bad accident, that's not inconceivable to think that a car can reach over, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty feet off the roadway at those higher speeds. So I didn't, and I didn't like the idea of kids on bikes or walking along a major highway. And I think that was a consensus.
Right, yeah. We all agree with that.
So the only logical way was to come down Santa Fe because those streets lined. I did early on contact, I personally contacted KDOT and continued to work with Senator Holland and KDOT. But their requirement on that crosswalk is that we have to have that sidewalk there first before they will do the pedestrian and speed study. Because my request to them was, please lower the speed in that area because we have a major subdivision with two exits and entrances in that area. In my opinion, too high speeds going across there, as well as some sort of pedestrian.
Can I interrupt you briefly? I do have a little more, I forgot about this, you mentioned that study. I talked with KDOT last week after they had talked with Senator Holland. They were going to do that speed study this spring. It got put off with two reasons. One is funding, lack thereof on their part. The other was because of the pandemic, they don't want to do a study like it was right now. It's going to be distorted and you don't have a lot of people doing their normal activities. So you're going to see cars whipping up and down, and that's really it. So they're probably, what looks like they're going to do is sound of a baseline here this summer. But really, what they'd like to do in the fall, when the kids are hopefully back going to school and whatever, and we have our sidewalk complete, then they're getting a more realistic picture of what that whole area is all about. So that's why we haven't got the study done yet. So sorry, just kind of jogged my memory there.
Yeah, I always have the Senator Holland, I want to say it, almost a year ago. He started helping kind of get, get connected with KDOT. I, Glenn and I had conversation back and forth through email with KDOT. That's where we came up with it. I followed up two weeks ago and obviously, they've contacted Glenn on that. So I want to say to the council, I, you know, obviously, you know, our communication continues to improve. It has for the last two and a half years. I believe we did put it out on social media and I, I can't recall because it's been almost two years ago. But I'm pretty sure we put it in the newspaper that we had at that time to, that's how we got the citizens to be in town, to show up. So I think, I feel like we did work the best we could amongst the parameters that we were given in that state of the city at that time. And we did, we did look at all variables. But again, I want to reiterate, the main purpose of the sidewalk was to have, be able to connect the east side of town with the Heritage subdivision to the elementary schools, which is what the TA grants are doing. And so that, we had the kids in mind to help them get back and forth to school due to lack of bus service. Because the bus service doesn't go, doesn't cover all of Heritage with their radius that they have. So I feel like the council and the committee did put a lot of work into it at that time as well as, as well as really, really kept the best interests in mind on where we're going to put it now. We didn't go up by every cul-de-sac. I mean, again, these are meant to be thoroughfares to help move people to and from. And Juno was right, that development was allowed to have sidewalks or not have sidewalks during that time. Now, all our new subdivisions have sidewalks for that reason because there is a pedestrian aspect to, to moving across the community. So anyways, but again, I'm going to, and anybody's welcome, I'll let Laura know. I'm going to try to set up a meeting with all, all those. I'm happy to answer any of their questions. And hopefully, we can do it, I'm hoping for next Tuesday night, but I got to check schedules and stuff.
And I was chair of the sidewalk committee at the time, so I'd be more than happy to attend.
Yeah, and I would ask the, any of the council to attend, to attend that meeting. But we are underway on the project. Ed, where do we sit on the project, on the timeline? When are there, can we find out when they're itching of crossing First Street? Because I think right now where they're working, we're okay.
Correct.
Do we have enough, I mean, do we have a two-week timeframe just to?
Actually, you know, they, they were itching to go because, you know, due to coronavirus and, and they were behind on the schedule. We wanted them to start initially in the project back in April. I think it was April first is the start date toward the latter part of March. And we said, no, hold off on that. And he was okay with that. And then I was like, I need to get going, you know, like any other business that was impacted for that. Due to the rain, it slowed things down. And also his subcontractor, the concrete contractor, has been kind of slow to get back to it. As you know, when you're in a contractor, you have a business, you, you schedule, okay, I'm going to have forms done. I'm going to have the concrete here next week at this time. Well, if rain happens, it gets pushed back. That doesn't mean it's the next day you can have it again. That means you have to go back through another cycle again. So he's trying to finish up Fremont. I have not seen any additional work today. I saw that they poured the driveway at the fraternity. They've stopped at that point. So I would imagine they would not get to Fremont by the end of this week, next week. There's going to be some rain and so forth. But I know they want to keep going. It's like any other road contractor or any other one that we do have. We do not pay the high price to say, you will get this done in two weeks. You cannot stop. We're first priority. We give them a window in order to do that. And that was part of this, you know, reasonable window for them to work with. Otherwise, we're going to get very, very expensive bids. So I could check with them, but I would not anticipate for them to move forward with it. If I recall right, we'd let them know to let us know we can advance so that we could start on, on Santa Fe to let them know that we'll be coming through and that your driveways and certain properties, they're going to have equipment and they're going to be going through that process. So we were sensitive to that, but we haven't got to that point yet. So we want them to obviously, my preferable route would be dig it in, you know, dig the forms, put the forms, I mean, remove the grass, put the forms in and get it concrete the right away. But in reality, it's going to take a couple of weeks probably to go through Santa Fe.
So maybe, is it inconceivable? I guess we need to, I want the engineer here too, obviously, from BG because there's questions I'm not going to be able to answer. I can answer to the communication part and to what we did do. I know unfortunately, our communication is in when you're limited, you can't always reach everybody. But I also know that we have been discussing this quite openly for quite a while. But with that all said, I guess I would want to know two things. How quick can we get the engineer down here? And how quickly can we have a meeting then? Because I, again, I think our whole intention was to have this sidewalk completed for school so we could get, you know, at least that lay so that school kids could walk safely to school by August. So I definitely, I don't want to slow down the process, project, but I also want to answer the citizens' questions that they might have. So could you check on that? I know we have a work session Tuesday night. I'm more than happy Friday this week, Monday of next week, see what we can get worked out and let, let me know.
Mayor, is your question that you want to have a meeting with the engineer?
I would like.
Just a meeting as quickly as possible that you can arrange it or are you talking a meeting with the council?
I want, I want the citizens to be able to come in with the engineer here and any council members that wish to be there to answer any questions that they might have at that time.
Okay, so that'd be a regular meeting then? Because we have over three council members out of this.
Well, we're going to publish it, as soon as I hear from you, we're going to publish it on our website so we can have it openly.
I'll talk to Jason tomorrow and see his availability to.
Yeah, because I mean, I don't think it'll be tough to, you know, seems like Junior's in contact with the majority of the people that have questions. So we can reach out to him and put it on social media as quick as we can. I know it's a fast turnaround time, but I want to answer the questions as soon as possible. That work?
Sure.
All right. Any further staff comments? Any council comments? Do we need an executive session?
Yes, we do.
How long do we need, Boyd? Fifteen minutes?
I would say twenty, to be safe.
Push.
I mean, we can try fifteen. I can talk fast.
Twenty's fine.
I motion we recess into executive session for consultation with our attorney for the city of Baldwin City, privileged of the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine with city attorney Blake Glover, city administrator Glenn Rotten, city clerk Laura Hartman, Ed Corton, Terry Baker, and resume in this room at, we said fifteen minutes?
Twenty.
Okay, let's do nine, ten, P.M.
Okay.
I'm moving to second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, name? Motion passes, we're in executive session.
Question passed, we're in executive session.